To the House of Representatives, to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, if you would begin with political. Steve Heron.
Here.
Carol Loncal.
Here.
Jay Jones.
Here.
Lexi Murphy. Gina Enraff.
Here.
Okay, all attendance names, we have a forum. Your attendance and guests, you all signed up on our sign-in sheet, so we have your names spelled correctly. And now is also your open opportunity to address the council if you are not already on the agenda for some reason.
You really want me to do this? You're probably gonna kick my butt right out of here.
Do I have to start the timer?
I have a timer.
Oh, gosh.
All right. You have a vote tonight to vote for two agendas for TCA. I want you to make sure that you understand their job and what they have to do, because not only does it affect the people in Paulina, it affects Hartley and Sanborn and the community.
And they've all got somebody representing them.
And that, but, they all represent everybody, not just one town. So remember that when you're voting tonight, okay? The second agenda I have is the publication of minutes and legal notices. From what I understand, you're considering sending this to Sheldon Paper, the review. Am I right or am I wrong? Because, does Sheldon pay property tax in Paulina? Do they represent Paulina? I pay taxes. My taxes help pay for everything that you do here, part of it does. Don't forget that. Sheldon does not pay taxes here. And so when you're thinking about changing the publication from the Paulina paper to Sheldon's paper, think about that. They pay taxes here. Part of their taxes pays what is done in this town. And don't ever, ever forget that. And the third, am I still got a couple minutes? Okay. I did stop up and talk to the county engineer today about the bike path. He gave me a suggestion, but they are not liable for that because it is a public or a city street. He suggested that perhaps what we do is pour sidewalk on the east side of that street and make the crossing over from Commerce Street to that sidewalk so that they are not on that corner, because as traffic comes around, there is nothing there to stop anyone or crossing there. And another thing they suggested is maybe put a little stop sign or something there. Maybe the little kids would heed to that, but that is private property. And I still have a minute, so Nate, thank you for slowing the traffic down on Maple Street. The sign is really helping. We appreciate it.
I think that was DOT that brought that in, wasn't it?
Yes, but it still helps.
Yeah, oh yeah, well, we asked for it.
So, that's all I have to say.
Okay, good. Thank you, Glenda. So where is Commerce Street that you were thinking you would use?
Commerce Street is the one that runs by the ballpark and the elevator thing there.
I don't know any of those streets, okay.
But you would have to run a sidewalk on the east side of that, at least it would be like from the daycare on down. That would stop.
At least they wouldn't come right around that corner.
No, and that's the danger part of it. Because when the traffic is coming around that corner, there's no way that you can stop.
No, I agree, and they go too fast around that corner anyhow. I mean, they're just not.
It was a suggestion that the county engineer made, that he said maybe this is something the city could look at. And they cannot do anything because it is a city street, even though it is their street too. I tried to explain that to him, but he wouldn't listen.
Well, he's the one that's about done, right?
This was the assistant that I talked to. He's a really nice kid.
Sounds good. Good idea.
Thanks, Glenda.
You're welcome.
So is this the only opportunity to speak, or do we have an opportunity to speak when the agenda item comes up?
Well, you're on the agenda.
I don't mean that, I don't mean.
Oh, the why though? Oh, well, basically, right?
I'm not talking.
Not much. Keep talking, Sharon. So now the yes?
So I guess I wanna say something then if I don't have any other opportunity. Yeah, I'm here to also talk about the publication consideration, and I'm speaking on behalf of my husband as well. We do agree on this issue, so, anyway. I totally understand that people have been disappointed in the past. I share that disappointment. However, I do agree with Glenda that we should stay in town. And I think that, I think that, Brian Conley. I always forget the new names. Anyway, the Paulina Paper. I do think they're making efforts to improve, and I'd like to take that into consideration and give them more time to continue to improve. I think we all, we all have that opportunity, that none of us are as good as we can be. So, anyway, that's all I have to say.
And I'm next.
And I'm not here to talk about TCA. I've been here three, four times on that. You all know where I stand on that and what my qualifications are. I'm also here for the publication, publication thing. I wrote down notes, but most of everything that was said, what I had written down, tax money, there's a Times office right down there. I have yet to find an Iowa information office here in town. So that means they're not paying any taxes. I think you'd be hard-pressed to prove to me they even bought a Coke here in town. And so that, it's just not happening. But this newspaper goes back to 1883. They have been the legal newspaper in town since 1883. Also, if you wanna go into that, there used to be two newspapers in town, and they were still the legal newspaper since then. You gotta keep it in town, people. It's just the way it's gonna do. Basically, I wanted to say that, yeah, looking for an improvement and stuff like that, yeah, fine, but don't get the idea that just because you make a newspaper, the legal newspaper, that they have to rubber stamp everything you do and write glowing wonderful news stories about you. Because that's not gonna happen. Years ago, when I was the mayor, we didn't get glowing wonderful news stories out of them either. It's not the newspaper's job to do that. It's the newspaper's job to actually kinda keep an eye on us. Keep an eye on you, I mean, keep an eye on you and make sure, they make sure that you kinda toe the line, so to speak. So, if you get a negative news story and you think it's all wrong, respond to it. But don't punish them. It's actually against the law to do that. So, that's it.
As always, thank you for the agenda. Do we have any additions or corrections needed to the agenda? At this time. If not, call for a, I'll make a motion in a second.
I'll make a motion to the agenda.
Carol's made a motion, and Jay has seconded to approve the agenda for tonight's meeting. Do we have any other discussion related to the agenda? During that, we'll call for a vote, all in favor of approving the agenda for tonight, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, say nay. That's all ayes, motion carries, agenda approved. Item number seven, approve the minutes from the 75 and 76 special meetings. Regular and special meetings, we have those. Anyone find anything that needed to be revised or corrected?
I have a question. When someone votes nay on a motion that says no reason, does that, does that really need to be in there?
I, well, there was no reason she didn't have previous discussion or raised any topic for why, so.
I was just wondering.
Otherwise, people don't know why.
Well, as I didn't see anything, I will make the motion to approve the minutes from 75 and 76 to 23.
Two has made the motion. To approve minutes as presented before you from 75's regular meeting and 76's special meeting related to the dog, vicious dog hearing. Does anyone else have anything else to say? Is anyone willing to support that motion? Okay, Jane, and Jay, Jane has made the motion, Jay has seconded to approve the minutes from 75, 23, regular meeting and the 76, 23, special meetings. Does anyone else have any corrections? There are no further discussions. We'll call for a vote, all in favor of approving the minutes from the 75, 23, regular and 76, 23, special meetings, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. I heard all ayes and one nay from not the council member. Thank you, Glenda, for naying. Okay, all ayes, motion carries. Minutes approved. Here now to the Paulina at-large board member for TCA, and we have received, that one is to Nelda, correct? Nelda's letter is here, and, oh, Madonna's also, and John's. So whoever needs to read those, there are copies there. Or can we read them aloud?
Well, just maybe summarize which ones they want to be on.
Well, yes. Donna is offering to do either position, correct?
Donna.
Donna Jensen.
She's the one that has a.
Oh, no, no. Yeah, very well. And Nelda's here to speak on her behalf, and so is John, so we won't say that. But both, all three have asked for at-large, correct? And then Donna also said she would be either one. So you have both items in front of you for, in order. Doesn't matter the order per se, but. So would you like these people who, well, who are here to speak on their behalf? Or do you want Nelda to add anything more to her or summarize her letter? Anyone read your letter aloud, summarize it? You were the only one that hasn't spoken on your behalf.
I didn't bring the copy with me.
Donna's not here to speak on her behalf. If anyone wants to read hers.
And John, did you wanna read yours or not?
Have you read it?
I believe so.
Oh, okay.
I read it. Did you? Did we get it? We didn't get it. You read it.
Yeah.
Have you read it? Okay, I have not.
I'll just let you reread it for everybody.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, stand up.
Honorable mayor and city council, I throw my hat into the ring to serve on the TCA board, knowing it takes many minds, many people, to duly represent our city and larger community in various ways. My experience includes owning and operating a business for over 20 years and working in city government for many years, as well as being employed in medical, legal, and financial institutions. I've also served on the Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors and remain active as well as other things in years prior. I care about Paulina and I do my homework.
Thank you. Thank you, Nelda.
I'm writing this letter to inform you that in my interest to be considered for the at-large opening on the TCA board. I have served with distinction for four years on the TCA's programming board and ended my second term as the board's chair. I have served on this board and given, and this servant has given me special knowledge of the tremendous challenges faced by cable companies such as TCA. I should also mention that I have not missed a single meeting during my tenure. I have a degree in electronics communications and have worked alongside TCA's technician on a networking project for the Presbyterian Church. By the way, a comment, I find them very good and helpful, and they go above and beyond what they really have to do. So they're a good bunch. I also helped design parts of the new HD interface at TCA, now being used by all the member churches to broadcast their church services. I feel for its size, TCA is a great cable company, and with my technical knowledge, I kinda know what to do under the hood. I kinda understand what's going on under the hood there. And combined with my TCA previous board experience, I'll be able to team with the present board to keep TCA one of the top cable companies around and provide cleaner residents with cable internet, cable and internet service usually enjoyed by the cities. And we do compare very well with large city cable companies. And so thank you very much for considering.
Thank you. You both. Have we done this for us? Are we done since we isn't here?
To whom it may concern, I am writing to express my interest in the TCA position. I believe it's important for community members to step forward and volunteer when needed. I believe I'd be qualified to assist the board. I have a bachelor's degree in accounting from the University of South Dakota, and I own a web-based business along with a locally-based storefront. I also have worked at the Cherokee Regional Medical Center for the past 11 years as an accountant and financial analyst. If I could provide, excuse me, provide any further information, or should you have any questions, please let me know, and I can reset my cellphone number above. So sincerely, Donna Jensen.
So you have three candidates for the first position, essentially, correct? And one for the second, and I agree to also be the second. Donna wants the program. She said she would do either.
Well, actually, you have three for the first. See where we're at, if we know the first one.
So just do you want to make a motion, or please make a resolution to a point?
We'll just do a roll call vote, so it's.
I have a question.
Yes.
Do every one of these people have cable TV to TCA? Now, John, you have probably, do you have TCA? Nelda, do you have TCA?
Yes, I do.
Donna, I hope you have.
Well, I was just asking. It's a good question. Customer.
You don't know, I didn't know, I thought maybe you missed.
I hope whoever gets it does something about it. I know it's hard to control the cost, but I opened my cable bill this last month, it was $192.
It's what mine are.
And I don't have DVR, HBO, any of that. All I have is the HD package and internet. Well, I have to have a phone with the package, that's $12. But it's $192, and I get people saying, what's the city gonna do about that? What's, we can't do anything about it. They're in their own entity, and we gotta do something to stop it. And I know it's hard, because like John said, these cable companies, you know, they have packages and they nail ya. You know, just like the local channels over there, they charge us, what, $20 a month?
Yeah, well, they nail ya, but there's one other thing, whenever you, when you look in your bill, have you noticed the breakdown of the thing where there's the off, what we call the off airs? And the off airs are like 4.9, 14, 13, and those stations are the off airs. The ones that you get for free if you have an indent. But the cable companies charge for that, and they charge a lot for that. Not the cable companies, but the off airs. Channel 9 is a terrible one.
They all, you know, at one time, when I was there, it was all free. And then they all thought they should get paid.
Yeah, and they're on that, so. They're around, you know.
What did you say about Verizon?
Yeah, but they. But if I can say more, the government requires. I was gonna say, the government requires we get off airs. And we get off airs within the, anytime the government gets involved with something, we're in trouble. And so they, the government requires that we get off airs, and we get off airs within the zone. So in other words, we're in the zone for Sioux City, so we have to get Sioux City. Even though Channel 11 maybe offers it so much per customer cheaper, that's not, we could go with them, you know, if there's two ABCs, we can go with them. But if they sue, then we'll have to go with them, and government will say, you have to go with them, and you have to go with the price they say. There's no we're dealing on that. So that's kinda how that works, and it's not fair, but that's what we're dealing with. And these companies, these off-air companies stuff are gonna price themselves right out. We cannot offer cable without those companies. We have to get an off-air. We have to offer off-airs, so. The four networks. It used to be we could get, like, remember back in the old days, we could get NBC on their own? And you could go on the satellite and just do NBC and not have to go through Channel 4? That's against the law now. You have to get, you have to get Channel 4 or whoever for ABC.
They charge it?
So. So that's kind of a little explanation, and that's what the programming board gets to do. They get to do that footwork. Sorry if I talk too much, but that's kinda how it goes.
That helped.
No, that, no. Just counts people understand where the prices are coming from, like it or not.
It's higher.
What, do we, as a council, do we have control over any of this, or is it?
That's why we have a rep.
But that's not, you know, it's, what, how much do we get a month back from? A thousand dollars? No. And so, so, yeah, well, a lot of people have dropped them, you know.
That to certain special.
Yeah, that's, yeah. I'm just bringing that up now so these people understand that, you know, there is a concern, in this community, there's a concern about the cost of cable. I've had a lot of people talk. That's one, number one thing, a lot of people talking.
I was gonna say, I quickly mentioned, TCA is kinda looking into streaming, kind of a streaming way. Kinda like TCA becomes their own Zoom, you know, that type of thing. It's hard to explain because it's still on the drawing board, so, but that will help.
Do we need a resolution to?
Is this a motion?
Is this a motion for a motion?
I'm gonna make a motion to approve Nelda Workmeister for the at-large board member. I'm not against John, I just think it's gonna be good to have a new face going over to TCA. And so, if anybody wants to know kinda what my reasons, I'm not against anybody, I'm just saying, I think.
I'll second that, and I believe in what she's saying, that there's a word complacency, and sometimes you get some people and stuff that you need, and with a board like that, I think you need new people, you know? And every once in a while. I know it's good to have people that are experienced, but sometimes you need a new face in the crowd.
Okay, had a motion by Carol, nomination for Nelda Workmeister to be the Paulina representative for the at-large board member of TCA, and Jay has seconded that motion, which means unless there's further discussion on that motion, or against or otherwise, so we'll need to call it for a vote. Okay, all in favor of approving Nelda Workmeister as the TCA Paulina Board at-large board member, say aye. No, sorry, roll call vote, let's do a roll call. Steve Heron.
Here.
Carol Loncal.
Aye.
Jay Jones.
Aye.
Lexi Murphy.
Aye.
Gina Enraff.
Aye.
All ayes, correct. Congratulations. Thank you, you have a meeting tomorrow morning.
Meet up at seven bells.
I do have a meeting tomorrow?
Yeah, they're gonna get back to me, but I haven't heard anything back yet.
It's a good thing that I wasn't, I work out of town tomorrow then.
I think I mentioned it, but it could've been a church.
You did say, but I'd forgotten the date was like.
Yeah, I know, it was the next day, but.
I couldn't really find that.
I'm glad it's so close. Do we have to find out then if there is one or?
Well, he said there probably was, they're going to.
It's the third Tuesday of every month.
They had called me and said they might change that to a different date, or back, or push it back a little bit. And then they never returned my, returned their call, so, so.
Well, you can call about five minutes.
Yeah, we'll text you.
We'll text you five in the morning.
Yeah, right. Don't shut your phone off. Well, maybe we can call DJ tonight, yeah.
I don't shut it off, but I leave it downstairs.
Can I put my name back on the programming? Just for consideration, I'll probably not get it because of the same reason, but.
I'll make the motion to nominate John for the programming committee.
Uh, there is a meeting tomorrow.
Oh, you checked?
Yeah. I just got a message, so there's a meeting tomorrow. Somebody must be watching and had my number, told me, there is a meeting tomorrow.
Okay, there you go, seven bells, and you know where the TCA office is? Is, yeah, just say where they are, kind of, south part, okay.
The first few dishes.
Yep, where all the big dishes are.
Look for all the items.
And your motion, motion was for John?
For programming committee.
So how many do we have for the programming committee?
We have Donna.
John and Donna?
John.
What happened with?
She changed her mind, yes. She called just the other day and was Donna's going for it.
I don't know what changed.
Okay.
Do you do a motion?
I do, I'm waiting for a second.
Oh, like to what? So sorry. So sorry, I'm not... I'm so confused on the motion.
I made a motion to nominate John for the programming committee.
And Donna to, or...
Not Donna, only John.
Those are the only two that are on.
There's only one.
Okay.
You only have one.
Only one.
Oh, I thought you were... I thought you were making a...
There are two applicants, there was one applicant.
Right, I thought you were making a motion to, like, add him to the list, so that's why I...
Oh, I see what you're thinking.
Gotcha. Yes.
So we have Donna or John, correct?
Yes.
And I made a motion to nominate John.
Gotcha. Okay, now we're all clear.
We're all clear.
So now you need to second.
I'll second it.
Okay, we had a motion by Steve and a motion, or a second by Lexi to choose John for the programming committee again. Do we have any further discussion on that? Okay, here it is, we'll call for a roll call vote. Steve Heron.
Aye.
Carol Loncomb.
Let me say nay.
Jay Jones.
Nay.
Lexi Murphy.
Nay.
Gina Enrow.
Nay.
Three nays, Jay's aye. Motion's dismissed.
I move that we appoint Donna to the programming board, Donna Jensen.
Yes. Okay, Jay has made the motion to appoint Donna Jensen to the programming committee for TCA.
I'll second it.
Jason's made the second. Is there any other discussion or questions prior to calling for a roll call vote? All right, roll call vote. Steve Heron.
Nay.
Carol Loncomb.
Nay.
Jay Jones.
Nay.
Lexi Murphy.
Nay.
Gina Enrow.
Nay.
So we had two nays, three ayes. So motion carries Donna as appointed to the programming committee. Has whoever spoke to her, has maybe talked to her about that?
She just brought that over to my house, so I didn't... So all those...
Challenge to call DJ.
City Hall have to contact her.
Okay, all right. Next topic on the agenda is publication of minutes and legal notices. As apparently you've all received a packet of material from some people this weekend that we're trying to add to the topic here, but they are... Have been directing Michelle to not publish the minutes within fifteen days per Iowa League of Cities, which Iowa League of Cities stands by their legal interpretation of Iowa code in saying that it does in fact require or request whichever shall cause to be published the actual minutes within that two-week period, which is...
I didn't get that.
Why?
I didn't get that.
I did.
Special delivery?
Yeah, and I know that there's a lot of discussions in different entities. I've been a lot of work...
I couldn't tell you that.
I don't know, I thought everybody got it, I guess I never called you to ask you.
There was one time that it came way too late for us to be able to fit it in. And that was on nineteenth, I think, I don't know, whichever one it was, that brought this up. All I said was nineteenth, and in good faith, I truly believe that the law, and I still believe that the law says it's worth us fifteen days to deliver it to be published. So there's no ill will.
How many times did Sandy Fritz allow you, did you publish it three weeks later for Sandy? Twenty years of that.
I have no idea, not a lot. We got it from her most of the time.
Right, but you probably weren't the only one that was a publisher of that time for her the whole time, were you?
We bought the paper in oh-three, end of oh-three.
It was twenty years.
So, okay, it was close. With Sandy's, we usually had them by the end of the week.
After noon.
And this one you got, the one that was late, was on Monday, right?
Right, and that was an early deadline weekend for us because of the holiday. So we were extra cranked.
That would be the next weekend, that was the holiday.
Huh?
That was the next weekend, that was your holiday, and this was the weekend before.
For two holiday weekends.
You don't understand how the print works.
Um, I did see that the July fourth light breakfast made it into that week's issue, so that means something can get put in the paper on Tuesday at noon.
There were pictures though.
And there's, yeah, there's a whole page. So clearly you can put things in as tight as that, but you chose to...
And what has regularly happened, Brenda, since this came up in January, is that we haven't gotten a legal before Monday. So in our belief, our earnest belief, that you had fifteen days to deliver it to us, we felt that it was a deliberate effort to miss the deadline.
Why would I deliberately... Why would I deliberately miss the deadline?
I'm not talking about you.
Why would I deliberately miss it in line? It makes her look bad, makes all of us look bad.
So that we can get to this place. It's just our feeling, based on all the things that we've been through in the last year and a half. Pardon me?
A lot of your feelings get in the paper, so I'm sure it'll be in there. You can let us know that, and everyone else, your feelings. Um, so anyway, it was brought to our attention that some people felt it needed to be later, but it's not. According to Bill Goldie, he was not able to send something by email today because he's driving, but he called and talked to Michelle about it, and we can't get the printer to print the page. That comes from their website, but it is Iowa League of Cities, and if you search for city minutes, it tells you the whole thing, just like we've been following forward. So they have to be published.
Right now, all... What we've got from a lawyer, we've got mixed responses from attorneys. Iowa Newspaper Association says delivered in fifteen days, League of Cities says published in fifteen days. I have questions in with the auditor of state, and I have questions in with attorneys. Um, the best, worst, I don't know, that we've gotten feedback on is that it would take a lawsuit and a judge's opinion to decide what it's supposed to be.
But don't most of the towns around feel it has to be published in fifteen days? I think that's all I've ever heard.
But see, it's never come up for us before. We've operated all, well... Believing it was fifteen days to be delivered.
Okay, okay.
So this is new information for us.
So if the legal's a little, whatever, that does create a problem. Is there a time that we have to provide it to them?
It was recommended, what, third Friday noon, I think is what we've been offering.
Friday noon is what we like to have it, yeah, that way we're gonna...
No, this was after January weekend, and she... It went until Monday.
Till Monday.
And then asked, and was told no. So that's what that meant.
We recall it's passed.
So are we... Tonight, I would...
That really is very clear.
Like, okay, but was our... if you were going to publish our meeting tonight, we have to have the minutes to you by this Friday or the following Friday?
It's always been that Friday.
Okay, so like this coming down, okay.
So I don't know why that should be a problem for Michelle, I think she's capable of writing minutes.
Because the biggest thing is, you also gotta remember, the Attorney General says that once minutes are published, they don't have to be approved if they need to be amended after they're published. They can be amended at the next...
They don't have to be approved prior to publication, is what multiple Attorney General's opinions...
They don't even have to be approved at all by council.
Oh, really?
What?
League of Cities says they do not have to be approved at all by council.
Huh, that's... well, and that's probably true.
That surprises me.
Well, if you're gonna publish them, they can't be approved.
No, but they're something that's not right.
Because you're asking your county housing... Fifteen days, sir.
Whatever, you're always gonna miss it. If you wait to get approval, you're always gonna miss your deadline.
Yep, right, I agree, but I'm just surprised you don't have to actually amend it if there's problems.
No, amended copy still lives here. Lives here, but does not...
Do I need to give these back?
Oh, yes, I have them then, we didn't have to...
A minute, uh, minutes like you do here, that change will be noted in the next minutes, and it will show up there.
Right, right, okay. I thought somebody was saying we didn't have to amend, I thought that's...
Okay, it just stays.
You have the changes in the minutes. I agree, we have a change.
I see what you're saying.
But as far as the Fridays, Saturdays and Sundays, we don't, you know, we work, but we aren't necessarily in the office. A lot of times we do stuff just so, because all the meetings are on Monday night. Our press time is Tuesday. It takes some time to set stuff on the pages, and there's multiple ratios that we have to balance, advertising and weight. So if we get extra advertising, it throws our ratio off, and that's for postal permit. We have certain ratios we're limited to. Then we may have to jump pages, well, if we... The way our paper is, that's four pages that we would have to add on Monday. If we, you know, that's a lot of stuff to try to pull together, and that's where you're gonna get the disappointing excessive extension and that kind of stuff.
So I got a question for you.
Sure.
Then, okay, so you told Michelle on Monday, or whenever she sent them, that you couldn't get them in anymore?
No, all I said was not this week.
Okay.
That was the reply, not this week.
Good. And then?
Meaning that we would publish them the next week, which we did, and that was in our full faith belief that that was legal.
Yep. And we were, they were the opposite way.
Pardon?
It had to be published.
What?
And but they felt it had to be published in the fifteen days.
That's what they felt, yeah.
That's what we all felt.
But we also weren't notified until late Monday afternoon that they went in someplace else. And again, we aren't gonna add, so we're not gonna try.
But the problem with that is that you said you couldn't get them in.
No, I said not this week.
Not this week, not this week, that's what you're saying, not this week. So they went someplace else because you said you couldn't do it, and they had to get them in fifteen days. Yeah, that week.
But see, okay, Jay, we had different understandings of what the fifteen days means.
And we're just finding this out now.
That's all that was, was just...
And you've been in business for twenty years?
INA, I have emails that INA says it's fifteen days to provide to the publisher. Just went through this with them. The last communication I had with Susan Patterson Plant, Director of Iowa Newspaper Association, said, "Our lawyer said it means delivered in fifteen days." So there's still the tension out there, or confusion, or different views, whatever, which backs up what the one attorney we spoke with said, "It will take a lawsuit and a judge's opinion to decide it."
Carol and Brimgar did get dinged twice.
I know that, I talked to Carol, I talked to Amanda. I know that they're under... I talked to Sandy. They're all under the belief that it was published in fifteen days.
I've never heard it any different.
I've never... And that's a first for us, because it's never been a problem before.
I don't know about that, if there's a problem, but...
Sandy, we're publishing for Brimgar at that time, I assume, so it would've been a problem twice, at least for Brimgar, if she got dinged by not getting something.
You're talking about 2019 when she first started, and she wasn't doing the minutes. She was busy with other stuff, and when I would call her and say, "Hey," she would say...
She said last year she had got dinged again, this is past audit.
She gets them published as soon as we get... She, she... their meetings are on Wednesday, so they have extra time from Monday. They have until the following Friday, you know?
I just know she told me when I asked her...
Our publication date is the fifteenth day from Wednesday.
She just, I called her and asked her about it, and she...
That's not from us.
Yeah, well, she said it was you that was late publishing hers, because she said, "I got dinged on my audit." And I said, "So fifteen days to publish?" She said, "Yep, that's the way it goes." And I said, "Oh."
And you know, Iowa Code Chapter six-one-eight point one-eight will force us after... If, once we receive them, if we don't publish them within thirty days, then we have to reduce our charge by twenty-five percent. So how's that math work? If we miss one, that happens, we apologize, it's not deliberate, it's possible that happened. It's also very possible that there's times that, and there have, especially when Carol first started, that she just didn't get them out. When she was alone, she had nobody, well, she had one assistant. She was lost in trying to figure out the financials and stuff, so she just... We'd get, what, three, four months at a time to publish?
Well, like I said, she said she was dinged just this past year.
I have a dumb question, what does ding mean? Was she fined or...
Nah, she just said dinged. I did not ask her if she got fined, she did not get... What's another word that they can give them of?
It's a finding.
Yeah, it's a, yeah, something with an...
If they give their opinion.
Yes, but she said the examiner said that she was off on one time or twenty seconds.
They'll just write you up on it, said...
They write you up, okay, go.
And, you know, I suppose I could go back and check emails and see when we got them, but I don't think that's really necessary. There's no ill will.
That's what she said, she just said that that's what she had.
To cause anybody a problem on our part.
So, this time. Well, it got published and legally met the qualifications for the Iowa League of Cities, so it is not going to go on her audit as a ding or a finding.
How many, how many Palina residents subscribe to the review?
Uh, I can get that number, can you give us a subscriber count?
I don't subscribe to it, so I would not...
What, do we buy it?
Oh, you? I don't buy the...
A lot of people don't.
I buy the tab...
Well, they got the review, they got the...
Yeah, so you have city limits.
Do you, how many, how many subscribers do you guys have in the three communities?
Four in the city limits, actually, in this case.
Well, you're saying...
Off the top of my head, I couldn't tell you.
What approximately?
No idea how many print every week?
You don't know how many print every week?
We don't have any print, we don't have to...
Because you can have a mother plate since...
You know, but what would you say in Palina?
What's what? What?
How many Palina residents would you say you have as subscribers? Not the ones out of public distance.
I... In Palina, in the Palinas of...
Palina district.
Do you have any idea? I have no idea, I haven't looked at it in...
Counter copies, probably... And I'm just imagining.
I don't wanna give a guess, I have no idea, we could be way off. From a postal recorder or something, we can check.
Yeah, and I don't know what the review has either. I bet the review has two papers, but you said the one's not legal?
The South of Brian's son is not a newspaper.
No, I'm talking the Mail Sun.
That is a newspaper.
That's Sheldon's newspaper.
Though the Mail Sun is a newspaper, I'm sorry, I thought you meant the, uh...
South of Brian's son?
I'm talking the Mail Sun.
How is that legal paper?
This is the news part of the review, which is a legal publication.
And that is illegal?
Yeah, right.
Well, how is the son not legal?
He said it is.
The Mail Sun, yes.
Yes, the Mail Sun is a legal paper. Yeah, I know.
The South of Brian's son is not.
News section, ALM.
How is it not legal?
It's over the, it's free and over the counter.
So it's only...
And it's inserted.
It's inserted, it's only...
It's inserted, yeah.
So it's not a special, that you only just get that.
Doesn't count a postal, we got it in.
Yep.
And I have no idea, we don't know what they have either for publications from this area. Sure, not answer.
I don't have, I don't have a problem with this, what, what, it's not the playing time, but... O'Brien County.
Bell Times.
Bell Times Courier. I don't have a problem with publishing the minutes in the paper. Sometimes, you know, the embellishments get a little off-kilter, and sometimes I've gotten angry, and I think, well, maybe I should write a letter to the editor, and then I think, "No, as a councilman, I need to keep my mouth shut."
I would disagree, I think the councilperson's jobs are to speak what they believe.
Okay.
I agree with Jean, I've always been supportive of your paper, and I'm a supportive of any business in this town. Always have been, and, I mean, even when I worked in Brimgar, I bought ninety percent of my groceries here in Palina. And I feel that we wanna keep all our businesses, that's what's keeping our town alive. I do get very upset, like Jean said, about some of your add-ins of the minutes. Uh, it makes us feel like we're doing a horrible job, and I don't need to feel that way.
Talk to the town people, and you're gonna find out you're doing a horrible job.
Oh, and everybody I've talked to said that they think we're doing a great job.
I get stopped at funerals, I get stopped in my driveway, I get stopped in the grocery store, I get stopped in the library, I get stopped in the post office. Why do the city council constantly have to argue about things? Why do the city council constantly have to argue about things? Why cannot they make decide what they need to do?
Call the order, please.
See, I've got people walk up to us.
Call the order.
Glenda is not technically on the topic right now.
I'm not on the topic. I'm sorry. I'm not going to, I just want to tell you that's what I found.
That means I was just really lying.
You can throw me out. I don't care.
I'm not going to throw you out.
I'm not going to throw you out. We just, do, do rules of order.
No, I just feel that, I feel that some of the stuff written in the paper, I think the minutes are fine. And to write some and to add a few things that are going on is great. It's part of the paper. But I don't feel we have to look like we're being cut down all the time.
But to make it clear, she's not adding anything to the minutes.
No, no, I know that.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
I know it's just a whole nother area in the paper, but I just, whenever I get the paper, I think, well, what did we do this time? And I guess.
I feel like we have a watchdog, if you want to put it like that.
You can try to find maybe an opinion piece in this supervisor's piece from this is an example of the reporting they do related to the minutes that they also publish, if you were curious, John, of how that works in the review. A story about the meeting, actually.
Yeah, a story about the meeting, that's one thing.
Of the meeting, not the opinions of the people writing. That's not newspaper.
Right, they, they, yeah, well, write an editorial in it.
That's the difference.
I have written editorials and I've written stories.
And they're kind of fudging both lines according to the Iowa Newspaper Association, which you don't.
Well, I guess they voted for that much money.
You're the only one who doesn't, by the way. The only weekly paper that is not in the state of Iowa.
You're doing your homework, aren't you?
I just heard things.
Do you, 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 you said about the Iowa Newspaper Association. Are you members of that?
No, we're not.
No, you're not.
Only we can paper not.
Only we can paper would sign them actually before.
So basically what we're trying to solve here right now is to get the, hit the minutes to the, to the newspaper on time so they can get publication when they're supposed to be published. That's basically what this allows to.
Well, actually, we're addressing the action taken on 206 that was to continue submitting required legal publications for fiscal year 23 to the current paper until further notice. So your fiscal year 23 has now ended and as of July 1, you started fiscal year 24. So you have to address that direction to Michelle.
So we've got to decide if we're going to keep them with the paper or we're going to do this.
No, I see here that I seconded the motion. I remember seconding the motion, but I do not remember hearing fiscal year 23.
Yep.
I.
Didn't I remember the calendar year?
So as, that was over then as of June 30.
And that's my oversight.
I didn't remember either. So that means we have to pay for the rest of the six months.
And I, I've had a couple calls and a couple texts.
Yep, I have.
About keeping things local and I thank them and appreciate it and.
Yep.
I'm willing to listen to anybody. That's our job as council people.
That's right. Our number one job is right here and you all have one. Hopefully you also will modify it as I have, say, I support Polina, not just to support Polina in voice only, but to actually take actions that do some, not just talk the talk, but you actually do the behavior that supports Polina. So I assume all of you at TCA, all of you have the paper, get the paper, subscribe to the paper?
Who, who here subscribes?
You all subscribe to Polina Times? You subscribe to Polina Times?
I roll up and get 75 cents and get one.
Okay, Steve, subscribe.
No, I get it at work. Okay, but the company pays for that. You don't buy it?
I buy that.
You buy that at work?
With my own money.
Oh, really?
You get it at home, Steve?
I'm not Steve.
I mean, Jay?
No.
Okay. He used to till he got mad.
No, my subscription ran up in April and I get the review, so I'm going to, I like the review a lot better. They have a lot more stories. And the, and the sun has a lot of, they have a writer who writes stories about stuff within the communities. Not just stuff that's bought over the, whatever, some.
So the support, right, the support has to be real, not just in property taxes for one building. It has to belong to the community. There are chamber members. They're not, you know, yeah, no, Sheldon paper is not here either, but also you aren't here in a lot of things either. So people should know that. You're not also here fully as a chamber member or anything supportive of the chamber.
No, I love the chamber because when you came, we lost all the advertising from the chamber for all of the events. Maybe that's coincidental. When the Facebook page went up, we no longer got advertising from the chamber at all. And so we covered the stuff for a while and then we still couldn't get any.
Two ways.
So we just, no, not every business.
Really? No, there should be. No, when we first had our business, they said every business should be a chamber member.
There's three of them that aren't.
Huh. I did not know that. I thought all businesses were chamber members.
We used to be, Carol.
Okay.
And you, we used to match when, when the, when the chamber bought an ad for a week for, say, Gymboree, the following week, we would match whatever it was they did. We did that for about five years after we started kind of learning things and how things worked. There were times that I would go out and I did it this year, go out and sell small stuff to try to support a bigger ad. There's a lot of things that we've done quietly because we never thought it was appropriate to say, "Look what we did." That's just kind of.
You put your own picture in there for the Fall Festival. You put your own picture anywhere even. So I think they were saying.
Thanks, like, come on, man.
Actually, I put that in.
You're also, you.
You're part of the paper.
I mean.
Why is that bad? We participated in it. It wasn't Fall Festival, it was Christmas.
Oh, right, sorry, my bad, wrong holiday.
So why is that bad?
So you put the chamber because you got bad.
You weren't patting yourself.
Okay, let's get back to the, what we need to be talking about, like.
Yeah, we're getting way off.
So basically, yes, you have the action, your action to take or continue would be related to our minutes, which you have in front of you. That is the only thing that, so why this is on the discussion and the fact that they've recently brought up a way to try to get Michelle in trouble-ish.
What?
By not, you told her not to publish before this last one when she had, you told her she had 15 days. That is incorrect information. These are for this.
That was a good, yes, I did. I thought that was correct.
Where did that come from? Just now you decided to give her that?
He's believed that for 23 years, 24 years.
I'm pretty sure we can find, well, in TCA can find in all of Sandy's emails that you've never offered her three weeks to publish.
Never needed to.
Sandy was sick and did she ever take a week off?
Okay, why are we talking about that one?
I'm just saying, she's trying to say that she has her, you know, that she, Michelle did this. This is our topic. I have no idea.
That's just, that's just nonsense.
This is why it's on the topic.
I have nothing to say. You have my email and phone number. This is ridiculous.
Yes, it is. Thank you. All right, so you can take no action. You just need to essentially defeat your fiscal year 23 and then you are clear to do whatever you choose to do for Michelle to go forward.
So you didn't decide what we're going to do with the minutes. Is that what you're saying?
You wouldn't have to. I mean, right now I did not put an action word in there so that we could just discuss this, but right now that is how it has been handled. This last one came to them just like normal.
Can we do an action tonight?
It's in, it's in the paper this week, right? It cuts that during there.
And it just has to, it just has to be there by Friday so it can get published. Is that correct?
Well, we have to decide though here because it only went to fiscal year 23 and that ended June 30.
Well, I think.
Because that motion was made.
No, I think I read, I agree with Jean. I don't recall that motion seen fiscal year 23.
It did.
I know it said it is, but I don't.
Because I, I made the motion and I read it off a piece of paper, fiscal year 23.
I didn't think I heard either. That's why when I heard it, I said, well, so I went back and looked and it said it definitely in the minutes.
It did.
Well, that was, I mean.
Who wrote the minutes?
Well, it wasn't me.
And was it February?
Yeah, that'd been Scott.
Right here.
So.
Because you even questioned Mary that it said about, you say 23?
About what?
You questioned me about 23.
Did you notice the minutes were down at 23, three days?
She thought it was fiscal year 22 because we were still, for the current year we were in.
I'm not following what the questions are. I'm sorry.
I didn't ask your question. I just said something.
So what action do we take here? What are we supposed to do?
We have to decide six months.
You can choose to do whatever you're doing, either take off the fiscal year 20, well, fiscal year 23 is the void. So you just have to.
Make it for fiscal year, all of 23 are where we're at.
Fiscal year 24. Calendar year.
We could just calendar year. Balance and calendar year and then do it in January like we do otherwise.
That would remedy that.
Yep.
Is that, is that great? I made the original motion.
And then in January, we look, then in January.
Start all of, we have to do that every year.
The fire department, attorney, the whole.
Official newspaper. I know INA says you don't have to do an official newspaper, but your ordinance does.
So does Lake of Cities.
Yeah.
There's no official newspaper.
So if there's an act, no one's taking the action, just leave these as they are.
Yeah, there's no action.
Legally, we can't send a review then since for fiscal year 23, then that says that doesn't continue submitting. So that's your suggestion?
That's why I feel we got to do something or there's.
Yeah, we're.
Better do four.
Thank you, and please.
Well, we could do it, since it says publication of minutes and legal notices, we could do under, under that item as an action, I would think.
And say how to continue it? What we want to do?
Just state your intentions.
I'd make a motion for publication of minutes and legal notices to Ryan County Bell's Courier through January of 2023.
Or.
Or.
You better make it December.
Yeah, you just go to the end of the year. December of 23, the end of December, however you want to say it.
I'll say it.
Steve and those.
Okay.
Polina Times, basically.
So we're up to January.
Because your last meeting will be, December's meeting likely have to publish in January, but. Okay, so Steve and Lexi, Steve's made the motion, Lexi's supported it to publish legal minutes and legal notices to Ryan County Bell's Courier, that's how you said it, but whatever, we'll fix the name, through December 2023.
Yep.
Is there any further discussion? Karen, then we'll call for a vote. All, yeah, you can. Steve Heron.
Hi.
Carol Alco.
Nay.
Jay Jones.
Nay.
Lexi Murphy.
Aye.
Gina Graham.
Aye.
Big two names with three eyes, motion carries.
I could not conscientiously vote nay.
Why do you?
Appreciate that. From all the people I've heard.
Well, then we got these, say.
That's to support Polina.
That's actively do so.
I do.
How can I support Polina if I don't vote for?
Yep. Yes, I, I. I have mixed feelings.
Okay, let's move on.
All right, reports.
Oh, we have reports, don't we?
Kelly's not here, but you have a sheet in front of you of his list. If you have questions, ask him about anything on that. Unless it's something to do with, something Michelle might be able to answer. And let's go then to Nathan. Nathan, do you have anything?
Did the guy get rid of his dogs?
I did talk to him this afternoon. He said two days after.
The dogs are gone.
That's good.
Good.
He didn't hide them in the basement.
Okay, and we don't have anyone here from the airport. We don't have Matt here. We don't have Lori here. We lost Ryan, who was going to talk about, I'm sure, the success of a golf tournament. Hopefully he will have participated in some manner.
We can talk about library in a minute.
Okay.
Jean and I went to their meeting the other day and Bob Deverell has resigned. So I guess there'll be a point with somebody new.
Is that the second person to resign lately? Norma, did Norma resign?
No. Norma just stepped down from the. President. Yeah, and they didn't have anybody that I know that they were looking at at this point, but he did resign. Is he okay?
He just resigned from the board.
Well, he was there. He looked good. Because they were giving him a bad time that this is the second time he's resigned. And he keeps coming back, they said. He said, "But I'm done."
Yeah, I didn't say that. He was done.
So, and they are not going to, he felt Matt said at this point they were not going to be changing their salaries at this point as far as, excuse me, new.
Um, was there anything else you?
Not sound by a.
I can't say anything else right offhand. Okay, well, we do have, we need to have some more action items on the agenda for next time. So let's hope we have some things resolved because we have three weeks until the next meeting. So Monday, August 7th is your next meeting and that means by August 1st, we should try to get all materials completed so that she can start making copies and put packets together so that you can get packets before the Friday ideally, but.
What have we?
Don't look so happy, Michelle.
What have we heard about the Johnson property thing? How does that?
That is happening this week, I believe.
They better do something up the adult then because they're, that's, it's a disaster out there.
Well, Ryan was going to supervise.
Can I talk about this real quick?
Get a pair of counsel comments.
Are we at counsel comment?
Last time when we had a dog thing, these pictures were provided to put the dead chickens in. How would you like to live next to that in town? You know, that's, that's a problem with chickens in town. Some people, you know, that's not, most of them have little chicken groups now, but look at the, you know, other dead birds, but that's pretty nasty. That looks like it's something on a farm. You know, I, I think we need to do something about this chicken ordinance in town. I don't know if there's an ordinance or what it is. Yet nobody says, one person says there can be ten and one person says there isn't either.
Actually, there is, I believe.
You have up to five chickens in town. We made that in 2020 of during COVID.
Okay, they, they were.
But I thought, and then, but I thought Abby said they had ten.
They had ten.
Yeah, so.
It's not official.
Done.
We have on the paper for it, so we will bring it back to you after.
Let's put that up on the, on the next agenda.
The ordinance was never put in place.
Yeah, I think there was kind of full information when we talked about it.
So they just died like those chickens.
Didn't they say no chickens?
Right now, it says, yeah, it says zero chickens.
That's what I thought.
Really?
But we, I think in 2020 we talked about because of COVID. And then a lot of people came in and asked and I thought we said they could have had five. We must have got a change.
Yeah, I think the number that we found is five. Like, your memory is right. Lexi was five.
Or was it 10?
But, no, yeah, we, it hasn't.
Well, the reason I thought it was 10 is because she had 10. So I thought, well, we must have made it to 10 or she surely wouldn't have 10.
It was five, I know it was five.
She says 10.
That was never put in the book.
Okay, now how about ducks?
It was never brought to you.
How about ducks?
Okay, don't bring anything more up.
It's very ducks, I think.
There's zero duck, okay, my neighbor had ducks. They were the best. They were better than chickens.
Um, oh, and then just, we did mention having a thank you to the golf courts, I think, that Lexi needed to sign yet, whatever, to say thank you. Them maintaining the well building.
Yep.
That sent out.
How about the, the speed bumps? Are we going to remove those since the games are over?
Yeah, Kelly said he'll do it when he gets back.
Are they still, and just find out if there's still water in the ballpark?
I would hope not.
I don't think so. We just had that last bill and they were.
That they stopped good.
They were just over a thousand, so.
And I also think we need to address this tree removal issue.
Yeah.
Yes.
On the, the street, the streets that have no.
Yes, how they're going to measure them.
No sidewalk, how they're going to measure, how far from the street they need to be.
Where the city parking is, or the city.
Yep.
There's a right way, Matt, back in the office.
We.
Is there? Oh, okay.
Good.
Ron and I went and measured and got some stuff from the DOT and stuff, so we just have to set up, but none of these working on the PowerPoint and then we're going to set it up.
Oh, that's a different topic.
Yeah, that's, we're talking about parking to see which ones, the streets that the city is responsible for.
Oh.
The right of way parking.
So you have a sidewalk right in.
There's a lot of, a lot of lots of them.
Well, so many hocks are different.
I know.
Well, I think, I think you go by what your sidewalk is by your property, don't you think?
Yeah, but if there's no sidewalk.
You have to go by closest sidewalk.
Then you go by that map that shows the right way.
Oh, by your lot line or something.
Well, it's how it was developed before the sidewalk came out or never got.
Oh, okay.
Whatever that division, the, yeah, each platted version should have its own right of ways, hopefully.
Okay, I know.
But you're right, we communicate it because people are, it's unclear.
It used to be somehow that everybody.
And why this is brought up, by the way, I forgot today, you know, they put the pink tags out. We're sorry going to do that.
They are sorry, right?
And so that's out there. Street mills identify the ones that the city will be taking down.
What are we, what are we doing for, on properties? Are we, are we putting anything out yet? Are we till next year?
What's that? They just need to handle theirs. What do you mean?
Well, no.
Oh, you mean for the people that.
The people on their properties.
I don't know if there's a rule of the land, but if it causes damage preferably. Is that all anything ordinance really says on dead diseased trees?
And also, if you're going to move something on the pickleball, we need to decide on that, so that we can get that going. Because don't they do it?
How, what in the world?
Stuff too.
How, do we have, by the way, it's given that.
Which part?
Oh, the sidewalk, yeah. The airport, um, contracts, do we have those signed back? Taylor, did he, did you bring in? Does anyone have them?
That's up to Brian Fish. He's the manager and he's, they haven't seen nothing, so.
Well, we gave them a contract.
The contract's part of the sprayer, you mean?
You follow the actual contracts?
Brian, as far as I know, has not emailed them to him.
No, Taylor got them from here.
Taylor said Brian was going to email them because you guys had no copies here.
And we gave.
Yeah, he gave, we got them though.
Like that very next day.
Yeah, I'm going to get Brian to get them to you.
So I can ask Taylor. He obviously has not been home because he's out there busy, but I've been out there tonight.
We can ask Brian. I just saw.
Yeah, get over Brian then, make sure that he's going to do it.
We did give them, well, the other day.
And does it say thirty-five cents on those?
Yes. Yeah. Questions here. Did you get them trees? So, so, anyway, all right, well, we will try to get that going. Anyone else have comments? They should say. Sean, did you have anything you want to say? We overlooked you because I can hardly see you out there.
Taking all this.
I'm making a motion to adjourn.
Certainly.
Lexi's made the motion and Stephen has seconded to adjourn. Do you have any other discussions? If not, so, call for a vote. Go in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Forty-two meeting adjourned, all ayes.
Okay, someone tried.
Yeah.